Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Landale City Council. Thank you, everyone, for being with us tonight. I want to ask the city clerk to give the roll call, please.
All right, good evening, everyone. Mayor Protem Kearney?
Here.
Councilmember Suarez?
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman Gorman?
Here.
Councilmember Cuevas?
Here.
Mayor Pollan Miles?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you, madam. I'm going to ask Councilwoman Shirley Cuevas to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand and face the nearest flag. Remove hats if you have them on. Right hand over your heart and ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. Okay, the first item on our agenda tonight is a presentation of retiring member of Landale's team. Retired tonight after 22 years of service. Ron, call him Ron, Rondo, I should say Ronald, Ron Reynolds. Okay, that's R, R, okay, that's a mouthful. So Ron is in our Public Works Department. He's a maintenance worker, one. He started working for the city in March 22, 1999. He retired in April 30, 2021. After 22 years of city service, Ron Reynolds retired from city employment on April 30, 2021. Ron has worked for the city Public Works Department in maintenance, as a maintenance worker since March 1999. Mr. Reynolds performed many duties in the city throughout his career with the city, including upkeep of the city streets, street signs, street maintenance, and graffiti abatement. Ron has always been a dedicated and valuable member of the Public Works Department. His dependability and dedication to his work has been highly commendable. Ron has been especially proud of his daily work as he has done in the task of graffiti removal in the city. In his leisure time, Ron enjoys muscle cars and rock and roll.
Yeah.
There we go. On behalf of the Landale City Council staff and the community, we congratulate you, Ron, on your retirement, and we present you with your city service lapel pin, recognizing 22 years of outstanding service with the city. And we also recognize you with a certificate of recognition. Thank you again for 22 years of hard work and dedication to the city. We wish you all the best in health. We also wish you all best in happiness on your retirement, and we will truly miss you. And with that, I would present you your virtual, as we have already presented to you, your certificate, which reads, "On the occasion of your retirement, 22 years of service, in recognition of over 22 years of dedicated service and commitment to the city of Landale, we wish you best in health and wellness in your retirement," and is presented by the entire city council. Congratulations, Ronald Ron Reynolds.
Well, thank you for the kind words, and I enjoyed working for the city. Thanks for hiring me.
Absolutely. Thank you for your hard work and dedication. All the years I've seen you out in the community doing graffiti abatement and doing the red, what do you call those? The red curves and just after in the community, and we really want to thank you for that valuable service.
You're welcome, my pleasure.
Absolutely. Congratulations. Okay, with that, we will move our agenda. Let's move to our public safety report. Let's hear from either Captain Allen or Lieutenant Leo.
Hi, this is Lieutenant Leo. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm tonight to present the safety report for April 19 through the 2nd. On April 15, a criminal street member, who is a Landale resident, was arrested by the Operation State Street Hero, a murder committed in the city of Compton. On April 23, at 7:14 a.m., Deputy Manaya was conducting traffic enforcement near 147th Street and Condon Avenue when he saw a black pickup truck fail to stop at the stop sign. On contacting the driver, Deputy Manaya smelled burnt marijuana from inside. As he placed to drive in the backseat of his patrol car, the driver admitted he had a gun inside of the truck. Deputy Manaya recovered a loaded semi-automatic firearm from inside of the truck, which was not registered to the owner. The suspect is a known Landale 13 criminal street gang member and was previously convicted of three felony charges. The suspect was arrested for being convicted felon in possession of firearm and additional charge of possession of an unregistered firearm and booked at South Los Angeles Station. On April 27, at 1:25 p.m., Landale deputies responded to a shooting at an inhabited dwelling called on the 14,800 block of Avis Avenue. The victim heard several shots and noticed her windows had holes in them. Special assignment officers Deputy Amora and Bauer contacted witnesses on an adjacent street who gave a description of the juvenile declared on bicycles. Approximately 30 minutes later, Deputy Bowers saw the four juveniles riding their bicycles near the area and had them detained. Two of the subjects possessed pellet guns. One of these two also possessed brass knuckles. It was determined that only one juvenile shot several metal pellets into the victim's apartment, breaking the windows. He was detained for vandalism and possession of brass knuckles and booked at South Los Angeles Station. The community intervention team, with assistance of the South Los Angeles Narcotics Team, served a search warrant on the 4,800 block, 4,600 block of 169th Street. During the service of the search warrant, five firearms in various stages of completion, of which were ghost guns and methamphetamine, were recovered. The parolee was arrested and charged with possession of an unregistered firearm, possession of narcotics for sale, and possession of controlled substances while in possession of firearm. He was booked at South Los Angeles Station. On April 23, a male suspect pointed a firearm at a Landale resident in the alley near 168th Street and Hawthorne Boulevard. The suspect fled in a white Ford Crown Victoria equipped with spotlights, like a police car would have. Councilmember Quinn's husband took photos of a similar-looking car blowing stop signs by their house. Fortunately, he captured the license plate, which proved extremely useful. Detective Torres, formerly assigned detective to Landale, but a seasoned police detective, began working the case and showed the vehicle to the victim, and he positively identified it on the 28th. Detective Torres placed the vehicle license plate into the system as armed and dangerous. On April 30, at 8:40 p.m., one of the Redondo Beach Police Automated License Plate Reader-equipped patrol units got hit on the vehicle, and they detained the Crown Victoria with four occupants in Manhattan Beach, sending the arrival Detective Torres and the Landale Patrol Unit. During the subsequent search of the suspect's residence in Landale, deputies recovered a replica Airsoft Beretta. Detective Torres presented the evidence to the victim, and he positively identified the suspect in the Airsoft Beretta. The suspect was arrested for assault with a deadly weapon and booked at South Los Angeles Station. On May 1, at approximately 1:50 a.m., Deputy Rodriguez convicted a traffic stop of a vehicle for traffic violations near Prairie Avenue and Rosecrans Avenue. The driver informed the deputy that there were narcotics paraphernalia in the car. While searching the car for the paraphernalia, Deputy Rodriguez recovered an unregistered unloaded firearm and methamphetamine in the car. Deputy arrested the driver and the passenger for possession of controlled substances, while in possession of a firearm, and booked them at South Los Angeles Station. This concludes my report, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions we may have.
Thank you for that report. Are there, any reports, excuse me, any questions of the report from the lieutenant? Okay, seeing that, I want to thank you, Lieutenant Leo, for your report and your, I think, your deputies and your personnel.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is our oral communications. I'm going to ask the city clerk to read any oral communications that we may have received.
No oral communications have been received at this time.
Okay, thank you, Madam City Clerk. Next item on our agenda is item G, which also, which includes, I should say, item 3, which I'm going to ask the city attorney to read, item 3, before we adopt it, should we do such. What is the Pledge of Disagreement concerning item G, the consent calendar?
If there's no additions or subtractions, I'll make a motion to accept the consent calendar as written.
Okay, motions been made by Kearney that we adopt the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
We'll second it by Cuevas. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing that, I'm going to ask the city attorney, do we need to read item 3?
Just for the sake of certainty, sir, yes. Item 3 is ordinance number 1180-21, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Landale, California, amending section 8.12.120 of chapter 8.12 of the Landale Municipal Code pertaining to firework violations. You're good to go, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, well, thank you. Okay, with that, I'm going to ask the city clerk to conduct the vote on item G.
All right, for the consent calendar, Mayor Protem Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Suarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman Gorman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cuevas?
Yes.
Mayor Pollan Miles?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, madam. Next item on the agenda is item 7, the budget update for quarterly, the quarter, rather, ending on March 31, 2021. Let's have the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Marla Pendleton, Director of Finance, and what I'm presenting today is our third quarter, ending March 31, 2021, budget update. Main focus is on the general fund, and based on our analysis for the quarter, it looks like our revenue is understated a little bit. Some of the high areas that we're recommending to adjust are Measure L, our district transaction tax, franchise fees, which have increased, and then our business license fee, which includes both the late fees as well as the business license itself. Our property tax, the budget is a little high based on where it is right now coming in, so we're recommending decreasing that $165,000 for a net increase of $135,000 in general fund revenue. For expenditures, we are on target for the most part. If you look at the percents, we've got some things that looks like it's a little bit less because, for instance, general fund support, 35% of it to date. Some of that comes in at the very end of the year, and that has to do with our ROPS that's coming in and gets distributed between funds. And also, Public Works Admin, there's still amounts in that total expenditure for capital projects that will be used this fiscal year for matching funds on one of the projects. Adjustments that we're recommending to the general fund appropriation budget includes firework suppression. One of the items that was approved on April 5 was to increase our suppression efforts this year, but a budget adjustment was not actually proposed, so we're recommending to increase the budget for the increased suppression efforts that were approved by council. That's a $30,000 increase that we're asking for. Our Public Works Administration salary and benefits, the amount that's actually being charged for salary and benefits to the general fund is more than what was originally budgeted, and Prop C is a little bit under, so we're requesting basically a reallocation of $40,000 of salary benefits from Prop C to the general fund, which will increase the general fund appropriations. Looking outside the general fund, there's a few things happening to date that we feel need to be adjusted. Gas tax, there's a $40,000 shortfall based on what's coming in, and basically, it's the use of gas. Prices are starting to go up, but still, the use is down. So with $40,000 revenue shortfall, we are recommending to increase, or, excuse me, decrease the budget by a corresponding amount. We need to increase full-time salaries, $30,000. Decrease the appropriations for contract services, electricity and special expenses, $70,000, for a net decrease of $40,000. CDBG street improvement projects, we're recommending that additional funds be allocated to that. Our senior activities this year, we budgeted for two CDBG grants. One is a reoccurring one that we get year after year that we allocate part of our annual funds to, and the other was a one-time grant that we got related to the coronavirus. Based on what we budgeted in both of those CDBG grants, we can't expend the full amount based on activities, and we do need more money for street improvement projects. So we have asked for money to be reprogrammed from the senior program to the street improvement program, so I'm recommending a budget adjustment for that, and then a net increase to revenue for unbudgeted funds of $255,860. And then, one of the things Public Works has been working on is we have money that comes in on construction demolition projects. It's put into a deposit account, and if a certain amount of recycling occurs and it's applied for, the money is refunded. If it's not to that limit, then only a portion of that's refunded. Well, that money has been sitting in this deposit account for a number of years, and it's being worked right now and transferred over to revenue for the solid waste diversion program, so it is restricted money, and we are recommending that $175,000 of those past deposits be set up and transferred into revenue and the budget established for that. There will be additional work on that, the deposit account, but right now, that's what can immediately be counted as revenue. The rest of the deposits will be looked at, and as they are identified, what should be refunded versus revenue, those adjustments will be needed also. So that was a cumulative amount. So based on that, that is my full report. If you have any questions, I can entertain those at this time. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you for that, that report, that budget update. Let's see if there's any questions on the budget update for this quarter. You don't have any questions?
Thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry, who was that?
That was me, I was just saying, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Pendleton. Okay, it doesn't seem like we have any, any questions on the budget update. Let's see, did we receive and file this, the attorney? It seemed like there was.
Excuse me, Mayor, there are budget adjustments that need a motion to pass.
Okay, let's see what the recommendations here.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I, this is Councilwoman Shirley Cuevas. I motion to approve the updated quarter-end budget, March 31, with all recommended adjustments. And I'll second that.
Okay, okay. So the motion's been made by Cuevas and seconded by Suarez. Then we approve the budget update along with all of the budget adjustment requests. Are there any more discussions on the motion? Seeing none, I'm going to ask the city clerk to conduct the vote on this item.
Okay, for item number 7, Mayor Protem Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Suarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman Gorman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cuevas?
Yes.
Mayor Pollan Miles?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number 8, Memorial Day and the Health and Safety Pet Fair Program Alternatives. Let's have the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. This is Mike Estes, from Director of Community Services, and we're here to talk about the Memorial Day Health and Safety Pet Fair Special Event Program Alternatives. The annual Memorial Day Ceremony and Health, Safety, and Pet Fair Special Event Programs have been designated city events for many years. Traditionally, the Memorial Day Ceremony has taken place on Memorial Day of each year, beginning at 9 a.m., while the Health, Safety, and Pet Fair has taken place the second Saturday in June, from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. In 2020, the city held a virtual Memorial Day event, which was aired on the city's YouTube channel and Landale City Channel, City TV Channel 22. City staff is making arrangements to provide a Memorial Day event, Memorial Day Ceremony event to take place on May 31 at 9 a.m. to air on both the city's YouTube channel and Landale City TV Channel 22. Last year, for the Health, Safety, and Pet Fair, we did not have the event for obvious reasons. LA County still prohibits large group gatherings, but they do, they do allow small group gatherings, private gatherings, for limits up to three households. So people up to three households can attend as long as the gatherings take place outdoors. Everyone wears a mask. Each person stays at least six feet away from anyone that is not part of their own household. This year, the municipal services staff is making arrangements to hold a small-scale, by appointment-only vaccination clinic. The clinic will be held at the Municipal Services Department building patio to provide pet vaccinations from 11 a.m. to 2 p.m. on Saturday, June 12. Saturday, June 12, is typically the scheduled, the scheduled date for the event, which is the second Saturday in June traditionally. In addition, municipal services will also provide pre-recorded public service announcements regarding animal safety, dog licensing, and general information on animal care while the vaccination clinic is running. Staff recommends that the city council receive and file this report and approve the airing of a virtual event for the annual Memorial Day Ceremony to take place on Monday, May 31, at 9 a.m., and approve the small-scale, by appointment-only vaccination clinic and the pre-recorded public service announcements regarding animal safety, dog licensing, and general information on animal care in lieu of the regular Health, Safety, and Pet Fair. That concludes my report, and staff is available for any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Estes, for that report on item 8. Are there any discussions on item 8? Okay, I'll entertain a motion on item 8.
Mayor, this is Mayor Protem Kearney. I'll make a motion to accept staff recommendation on number 8.
Okay, the motion's been made by Kearney to accept the staff recommendation concerning item 8. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, and, okay, Ms. Cuevas, we'll second the motion for item 8. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please conduct the vote.
I guess, sir, for item number 8, Mayor Protem Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Suarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman Gorman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cuevas?
Yes.
Mayor Pollan Miles?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item 8 is the city manager's report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Just two brief items, both related to mobile vaccination clinics. Just a reminder to those that, in our community, that were able to take advantage of the vaccination clinic that happened on April 16. Providence Little Company of Mary Medical Center will be back on May 14 to provide second vaccinations for those, again, who got the first dose on April 16. In addition to that, we've also been in talks with the County of Los Angeles, and the county has agreed to also provide a mobile vaccination clinic, and they have confirmed two dates with us, May 21 and June 14, for first and second doses. So similar to the clinic that was put on by Providence, there will be 250 vaccinations available and at a time in the near future, those who are interested in getting the vaccinations can make appointments via the MyTurn app. And so we encourage all those out there who have yet been able to get their vaccination to take advantage of this local vaccination clinic that will be here in Landale. So with that, that's all I have. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, sir. Next, oh, next item is a report from council members. Let's hear from Councilwoman Brenda Suarez.
Thank you, Mayor. So this past couple weeks, I did attend the South Bay Cities Council of Governments Board of Directors meeting last month, and I guess one interesting thing that we discussed was talking, we had a representative from the LA County Health Department, and she kind of went over different numbers. One of, one fact I thought was interesting was that apparently, in our city, there's not a lot of people with access to healthcare. So that was something that was interesting to me. And then, on another good note, our city, we did go over percentages such as depression that's going on, and our city ranked very, very low on that end. So it's just kind of interesting to see the different facts that they gave. And then I did attend last week the General Plan and Hawthorne Specific Boulevard, or the Hawthorne Boulevard Specific Plan Update. Thank you to staff, it was great. We went over parking, so it was very informative. And I, and we are, I believe, having future meetings, one of which is by phone for those without access to the internet. And then I think the general one will be having a lot more to come. So that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Cuevas.
I also attended the General Plan and Hawthorne Boulevard Specific Plan Update. Very interesting. And thank you, staff, again, for a great job. And I would like to see if we could put in next meeting agenda, a discussion of the crossguards. I've been asked by several citizens if we are going to have crossguards now the school has started. I know we can't do it for 2020, but maybe for the, we could discuss the 2020, 2021 school year, possibly having a crossguard on the main streets.
Okay. Is it all for you?
Oh, yes, sorry.
Okay. Thank you. Councilwoman Hoffman Gorman?
Thank you, Mayor. I had two different events that I have attended since our last council meeting. The first one was with you, Mayor. We attended on the 20th of April, the Metro meeting that I think is quite successful because Metro is hearing from us our concerns, and they're starting to get the hang of it. And I was absolutely thrilled that we had a representative there from Holly Mitchell's office to also be on the lookout, not just for us, just to make sure what's going on over here. This is a really big deal for Landale, and I think what we really stressed in this meeting this time is that it's not just affecting those of us that live right along the areas that are, that will be right next to these two possible routes. It's affecting every single person that lives in Landale. And so therefore, when they send out a mail or when they communicate, we would, we want every house in Landale to be informed and included in any of those correspondence. That was the big piece on there. I look forward to continually meeting with Metro on that. And also, I attended the Contract Cities meeting on the 21st, and basically, that was a goodbye celebration for the outgoing mayor and looking to seat the incoming mayor for Contract Cities the next meeting in May. And those are the two meetings I have taken care of. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. The Councilwoman, that's sure for my Protem, Mr. Pat Kearney.
Thank you, Robert. I attended one meeting with Ron. Uh, thank you, Robert. I attended one meeting with Rhonda and yourself for the Contract Cities in celebration of Lindsay Horvath's service as president of the Contract Cities, and, uh, our incoming president will be Mark Warneck from La Vida, which is next month, this month, and I'll be attending that, too. Thank you, Robert, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Um, I attended, um, so we did have the sheriff meeting, that was since the last meeting, I, I do believe. If in fact it was, I do believe it was since the last meeting. I attended the sheriff's meeting along with, um, the rest of the council. I also attended San- Sanitation District Meeting, this regular, regular meeting. Also attended the General Plan and Hawthorne Plan, um, meeting, um, very interesting, uh, input, uh, from the residents. I too want to thank the, the staff, uh, for putting that on, um, I did compliment the staff for, uh, putting on a well, um, a well, um, organized meeting, um, and a lot of discussions, and they, they provided a lot of opportunities for the public to, um, voice their concerns or what they would like to see, um, in terms of the general plan and the specific plan. So, once again, I want to thank the, the, um, the staff for holding those meetings. And I look forward to, um, participating in the upcoming meetings as well. Um, as mentioned, I also attended the, the Metro Subcommittee Meeting, um. Uh, I, I was delighted just as well, um, Councilwoman, um, Hoffman Gorman, that we have our new supervisor on, on board. I think, um, we're starting to turn a page um, in terms of, um, our relationship with the, um, County Board of Supervisors, and this Metro, um, issue is just, uh, one issue, um, that we look forward to, um, working with the, um, our new supervisor, Holly Mitchell, um, um, on. And so I was also glad to see that, um, she had staff, um, represented, and will have staff represented, um, on, um, at the meeting, the Subcommittee, uh, meetings, um, going forward. And lastly, yes, I did also attend the, um, the celebration of the outgoing, um, president for the, the Contract Cities Association. And I look forward to the new president, um, Mark taking over as president, um. I think he's served, he's served president at least once, this may be even his third time being president, but he was president at least once, um, before, and look forward to when he comes into office. So that's all I have. With that, we have, we are now at item ten, item ten.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize for interrupting, um. I just wanted to make sure that, uh, we have clear direction from the council, uh, regarding the request from, uh, Councilmember Cuevas, uh, regarding crossing guards. I just wanted to make sure that there was a consensus of the council, um, to bring that forward, um, as a report to the next, um, at the next council meeting.
Well, I know it's gonna be, um, one of the items that we'll, we will discuss for the, the budget when we start to, um, looking at the, the budget for the, um, next, uh, upcoming fiscal year. Um, so we will be discussing that for the, for the budget is concerned, and I would assume that's what Councilwoman, that you would be looking, looking to discuss, um, should we have it on another agenda? I, I don't have any problem with having it on the, having it on the agenda, um, but I do, um, know that we're gonna be discussing it as a possible item, or should discuss it as a possible item for, for budget. Which is coming up, what, what is that, next month? Not, actually, not next month, it's this month, shouldn't it?
Yes, I, I'll let, uh, Marla clarify in terms of, um, when we'll be bringing, um, items to the council related to the budget, but, um, again, specifically to, um, Councilmember Cuevas's request. Um, either way, however the council would like to do it, if, if that's something that the council would like to just discuss as part of the budget, um, talks, or if it would like a specific item brought at the next meeting, um, that could be done as well.
Okay, let's hear from Pat, quick, Pat Kearney.
Uh, I believe we have a Subcommittee for this with the, with the school district. I think we should go through that versus see what they say, if they have any money, and then put it on the agenda for next month. But I believe, uh, Councilwoman Rhonda Gorman-Hoffman and myself are on that committee.
Now, who's on the committee? I thought Kearney and Cuevas was on the, the school.
That's on the, uh, I believe the park. I think Rhonda's on the, uh, crossing guard, if I'm not mistaken.
No.
Just for clarification.
There's no Subcommittee for Crossing Guard.
No.
No?
Yes, that's correct. So just for clarification, there are two, uh, city council subcommittees, uh, related to the school district. One is, uh, related to the parks discussion that we've been having, and then the other one is just a general, it's a standing, uh, Subcommittee, um, just with the school district in general, so it's not for a specific topic, it's just, um, a standing Subcommittee, uh, or a standing committee, uh, between the city and the, the school district. Okay, thank you.
Right. Okay. Well, I don't have any problems having it, um, you know, uh, having it on the, the agenda before we have the, the budget discussion.
And this is Councilmember Suarez, I'm okay with that as well.
Okay, so based on what I've, I've heard then, um, I'll have a report for the council at the May seventeenth meeting on crossing guard.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's, let's, uh, let's see, well, okay, we're at item number ten, which is a closed, uh, session, and I'm gonna ask the city attorney to, um, read the provision of the closed session.
And that will be me. Uh, this is Katie Satorp, and, uh, it's nice to, to meet you all as such. Um, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members, tonight the city council will meet in closed session to discuss two items of potential litigation under Government Code Section five-four-nine-five-six-point-nine, subsection D-two. In this case, both items involve facts and circumstances known to the potential plaintiff. As required by the Brown Act, I'm disclosing the facts on which these items are based. The first is based on an email complaint filed by Sean Moore on April twentieth of this year. The second is based on a written complaint filed by Marla Pendleton on April twenty-first of this year. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We can now move to closed session.
Okay, thank you, uh, Madam City Attorney. Let's, um, move to closed session.
Okay, Mayor, we're on.
Okay, that was the word of saying, when we switched over, everything switched itself, um, the sound, I don't know what's that about. Okay, I can be heard, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, okay, well, um, I, we're ready to report out. It sounds, it looks like we're. Okay, with that, I'm gonna ask the, um, the city attorney to give the report of the closed session. Uh, just the council to give the report of the closed session.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, pursuant to Government Code Section five-four-nine-five-seven-point-one, subsection A-two, subsection A-three, and subsection A-four dealing with litigation matters, no reportable action was taken tonight.
Madam City Attorney, with that, we have concluded our agenda for tonight. Um, have the other page when the next council meeting is gonna be.
Seventeenth.
Give me a second. Seventeen, okay, that, for some reason, it's not, I don't see it on there, okay. Okay, well, that's gonna conclude for tonight's, um, city council, um, meeting. Uh, my next registered scheduled council meeting will be held on May seventeenth at six-thirty. It is now on eight-oh-seven, and this meeting is adjourned.